All right, we'll call to order. This is the Brainerd City Council Workshop, Joint Workshop between the Council and the Brainerd Public Utilities Commission. It is Monday, July 28th, 6:00 PM in Council Chambers. Please, Tony?
I'll call.
No Tony tonight.
I can do it.
Okay, please call the roll. Johnson?
Here.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Here.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chazak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Mike O'Day, excuse me. Mayor Bado?
Here.
Commissioner Angland?
Here.
Higgins?
Here.
Matten?
Here.
And Mark O'Day. All right. Thank you. Next, we just have number three. These are the discussion items. Three A is a discussion regarding roles and responsibilities of City Council and Public Utilities Commission. And the presenter for this item is City Administrator Nick Broyles. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to go into a tremendous amount of detail. Council is, as kind of, we bounced this around a little bit. There was some, kind of as the Public Utilities Director vacancy as a backdrop, several conversations have been had regarding potential conflict, potential ambiguity in roles and responsibilities. We had a City Council meeting a couple of weeks ago where even in committee, we had some lengthy conversations. And the Council decided in the full session that night to set up this meeting with the joint, a joint meeting with the Council and the Commission. So staff is, I think the appropriate staff is here. If you guys need to ask staff any questions. Thank you Commissioners for being here tonight. But really, we need to hear from the Council and the Commission on, on kind of what your ideas are going forward for some of the things that we pointed out. And the, the agenda item is the same agenda item. The text is the same agenda item as it was a couple of weeks ago, so I won't go into that. But I'm just going to turn it back over to the Council for any conversation.
Thank you Administrator Broyles. So everybody got this packet? Everybody get a chance to read through the comments? Not everybody sent anything every, something in. But there's enough there, I think, that we can have a conversation on where this confusion might be coming from. But I want to open this up. If anybody has questions for staff regarding anything in the packet or anything that's been brought up since?
President O'Day.
Mr. Chazak?
Reading through what we have here, I, of course, I have my opinion and everybody has theirs. Some, I think people maybe have asked more questions and given their opinion, which is fine. I, I read what you, you had submitted, President O'Day, and I can see similarities. And I, I agree with your assessment of how this should be laid out. It seems to make sense to me regarding our interpretation of the Charter, which I think is one of the things we're here to do based on Section Five. And it, I, I don't see a lot of issue with how you described your thoughts on that. Like I said, I, I see our administrator's role as not being involved in operations. And I think that was, I, I don't know if that had happened or what. I, I think something maybe been implied there with our previous utility director's resignation. That's nothing we can actually verify necessarily by having him come in and explain what happened. But at the same time, having a utility director is the wishes of the Commission by a vote. And however, I think they decide we should seriously consider. And I, I think the interim for the time being is working out okay with Danny, Charlie, and Trent taking on those roles. Whether that's permanent or not, I guess is up to us and the Commission, or perhaps the Commission, they did vote. And it does seem clear that the shall, we shall employ the necessary personnel if they determine that. I think it's their role in many respects to determine that. That's one of the questions I think that was asked. Who decides what staff is needed? Again, the, so I'm kind of, I'm, I'm very highly leaning towards your interpretation. And like I said, I have some similarities, not identical, but that's where I wanted to start out with. I, I guess I'm looking for other opinions as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chazak. I always love it when people agree with me. Anyone else? So my interpretation, and I'll just expand on it, is not to really change anything with what the Commission is doing. I see the Commission as, what they should focus on is what I consider to be the operations and the management are the projects that fall within Brainerd Public Utilities, having to do with the pipes, having to do with the electrical grid, having to do with any of that infrastructure that's involved in that. I think the way that the Charter is written, I, I read through it enough times to where I thought, I think this is clearer than what we've been saying. In that, the employees always fall under the Council, under the City Administrator, and flow down from there. So I know there's going to be some disagreement with that, but that's, that's the way it is written in the Charter, in my opinion. That's the way it is set up in our, our organization chart. I think anytime that there is miscommunication or disagreement between something that a Commissioner from Brainerd Public Utilities is noticing, that should be communicated with the City Administrator at the very least. And that should be communicated with the future Brainerd Public Utilities Director as well. And I think the Administrator should always be CC'd in those, in those emails. We always do. If I, if I am contacting any department head, I'm always CCing Mr. Broyles. If I have questions for any other staff members, I'm always CCing Mr. Broyles. It's just clear communication from the top down. I think that's super important. And I think maybe that's what we've been missing some of. Maybe we haven't been clear with that with all of our Commissions, and we should. But that's my intent with that interpretation I have. And I think if we move forward, I don't think we need, in my opinion, a Charter change. I think we need an official interpretation of what the Charter says. If anybody disagrees, three? Go with Johnson and then Higgins?
Okay, yeah, I'll just say I, I absolutely agree with your interpretation too, Mike, that the Public Utility Director answers to the Administrator and the City Council. All operational decisions are made by the Public Utilities Commission, but that flows through the, the City Administrator and the Public Utility Director. When we amended the Charter years and years ago now, we made the language very, very similar for the Public Utility Commission and the Parks and Recreation Board. And that's how I saw it working with both Commissions, is the Parks and Recreation Board makes all of the decisions for the operations and the running of our parks. We may have opinions at the City Council, but we have no authority to make any decisions on what happens in the parks because that's the Park Board. But all of the employees, all of the maintenance work, the Public Works Director answer to the City Administrator through the City Council, or to the City Council through the City Administrator. And that's how you've written it here, and that's what I agree with. That's the same with the Public Utility Department. The Commission makes all operational decisions on the plants, on the pipes, on the wires. And it's up to the City Administrator and the Public Utility Director to make sure their actions are implemented in force. So I just fully agree. That was the one issue I had and why I wanted to have this discussion, is our prior Public Utility Director seemed to be very confused that he had so many bosses that he didn't know who to answer to, when we just need to be clear as, as a city that our next Public Utility Director needs to know that they're hired, they have one boss, it is the City Administrator. So, thank you.
So really kind of to piggyback on that, it is the City Administrator's job to make sure that the, the department heads are running as the Committee, the Commission and the Council have directed. Commission directs Brainerd Public Utilities. Those, those decisions made in those meetings are a motion by the entire committee, and they pass, and that should be direction enough for those employees. When, when that's over, when that's said and done, just like all the other Commissions, just like all the other departments, that is up to Mr. Broyles and the Director of that department to make sure things are run that way. And the oversight from there might be noticed by you guys, but it should be reported to the Administrator. I hope that, I hope that makes sense. I hope that does everybody. But Mr. Higgins, I know you had your hands up, or hand up.
Yeah, so I got, to me, um, thank you for letting me share, and thank you for putting this meeting together. I've been studying this a little bit, and to me, there's really only, from my standpoint and my opinion, there's two issues that, that we need to be looking at or working on. The first issue is getting, the Commission should control all of the underground pipes, including the gravity sewer. That, that is, I've done some research, and it's pretty rare to see a, a Public Utilities Commission that operates underground pipe and, and at, at the scale, especially with the power at the scale we do, where we don't, we don't take the money in and we don't have full control of all of the underground. Most cities that I studied and researched are set up about like we have it. You guys, you know, the city runs the Streets Department, they run the, they, they oversee storm sewer, but when it comes to water, sewer, waste treatment, water treatment, and power, that goes under the Commission. So to me, that's kind of an anomaly. And what, the reason I started talking about this is when I started realizing that we have to put $100 million into our waste treatment plant in the next 10 years, and we, we can't control what's going down the sanitary sewers. Like right now, in Baxter, if I'm going to put a restaurant in, I gotta put probably a pair, pair of, excuse me, 2,500 gallon underground concrete tanks. Nacho, I have a, it's literally a box this big around underneath my sink that's the grease trap. And, you know, talking to Charlie about what's, what's going into, into our sewers, when he started charging Baxter for their CODs and BODs, and I know you guys don't understand what that, those are, but those are solids, those are grease and oils and stuff that, that takes a lot more effort at the waste treatment plant to get out of the waste streams, he started charging Baxter for that. And all of a sudden Baxter, City of Baxter, because it was hitting their pocketbook, started changing how they controlled everything going down their sanitary sewers. Right now, we have no control over that because you guys have control over what goes down our sanitary sewers. So there's a huge issue there with that that needs to be dealt with. I don't care how you do it. To me, either get rid of the Commission and just handle it all under your Department of Public Works, or completely separate it and let us handle what this Commission was designed to do. So to me, that's, that's the biggest issue that I have in this. The second issue that I, I don't understand, could we pull the Charter up and go to the number five? Paragraph four? Is, it says there that the city shall employ all necessary help for the Commission to properly perform its duties and approve all terms and conditions of employment. Is that where you guys are thinking that you employ the Commission's employees? Is that why you think that?
Yeah, it was a, it was a long discussion we had through the Charter meeting. That started through the Charter meetings, and that was the intent of that.
Okay, because that, it's not what that says legally. The Charter, you guys have a very large issue with the way that reads. And I'll tell you, I'll, I'll, I'll show you what, I sent this to a lawyer to read because I didn't understand it. Because it, to me, that doesn't say that you guys employ employees. In a legal municipal context, the word employ can have two primary meanings, to hire or retain someone in a formal capacity, e.g. staff or contractors, or two, to make use or of, or utilize resources, assistance, or support. In the phrase employ all necessary help, the second meaning is likely. It suggests the use of engagement or assistance, not necessarily through formal hiring. The word help is general and can refer to tools, services, or informal support, not just employees. The phrasing is often used to grant broad authority to act efficiently without being limited to formal employment procedures. To make use of help rather than strictly to hire, the context matters a lot. And in this case, the language seems to be intentionally flexible to allow the City Council or officials to act as needed. If this ever went to court, that word, this would go to awful high court fighting over it. And I don't want to fight about it. That's not what I'm saying. I just don't think, like, like this whole deal that we have going where you guys hire the employees that then we have to control, to me, it's like I own the Northern Pacific Center, and I gotta hire Mary's employees, she's a tenant of mine, and I gotta hire her employees to work in the coffee shop. It does not make sense to me. I'm not going to argue. It's interpretation. There's 20 different lawyers, there are 20 different ways, but I wanted to get that off my chest. Mike, I, I read this whole packet a couple of times. I mean, we could sit here and talk about and argue these points, I mean, until the cows come home. I just, I, we just got to figure out how to do it, how we can all agree and start moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I know the way that we've been doing it clearly doesn't work. We just hired somebody new, and that, it was too confusing. So my idea for the best way to do this is an interpretation that would take that conversation out of it. Whether we agree with it all together or not, that's, whatever we want to discuss, we can discuss. But I don't see the ambiguity there that you're trying to point out. I understand where it's coming from, but I don't, I don't, I think you have to pull that ambiguity out of the situation in that sentence in order to get there. I just don't, I think, I know the intent. I was there when, when we made that change in the Charter. It was very, very clear. And there was, there was Commission members that came up and asked questions and didn't necessarily agree with that part because of this. But that was the intent, whether it was written the right way or not, maybe ChatGPT wasn't smart enough for us back then or something, we didn't know exactly how to put it in there. But if we need, need to make a change, it's going to be a lot more difficult to clear that up than it would be to just interpret it. Mr. Chazak, I know you have your hand up.
Thank you. I guess to both of your points, it is up to the Council, according to our city attorney, to interpret this. And that would have to be done by a, a majority vote to interpret the language that we're reading here. And I don't know, that seems to be able to clear it up real easily if at least four of us can come to an agreement through a motion and a vote on how we interpret what Mike had just brought up about that particular line. And I, I mean, that would be my idea of settling this and just moving on. Of course, that interpretation could change at our, the, the meeting after we make a decision on it based on how Council action doesn't require a, a future Council or the same Council even to follow that standard. So I, I think we all understand that. But that's how I was looking at what Mike was saying. If we have, you know, four or more Council members seeing the language as one thing versus another, that's how we make that decision. I think I'm correct on that. Don't, wouldn't you agree, Mr. Broyles?
Yeah, I think, I think we have our attorney on.
Okay.
Line. Do we have, Joe, are you on there?
I am here.
If you're following along, is, can you answer Jeff's question?
Yeah, Council and, and Commission members, I mean, yes, the Council could make that determination, could make a, take a vote on it and make explicit the interpretation of what that means. Just briefly a little history on that, that paragraph. The original language in the Charter before we modified this in 2021, and by original I mean from 1985, the Charter goes back 100 some years. The 85 version said that the Commission shall have power to appoint and employ all necessary help to properly perform its duties and so forth. All we did with paragraph four was change that from the Commission to the City Council. So it reads, the Council shall employ all necessary help for the Commission to properly perform its duties, et cetera. So, and, and we also had language here about personnel policies. So the word employ means the same thing it has meant for over 40 years. You're going to hire them. You employ them. And instead of the Commission employing them, is the City Council employing them because they are in fact city employees. And we needed to clarify that because the issues we were having with the past number of years with the Pay Equity Act, with various state laws and so forth, and the personnel policies not being consistently applied across the entire city, the idea, of course, was to clean up all that, make it clear that the PPU employees were in fact city employees and were all subject to the same rules. So yeah, if, if the Council and the Commission feel that is still unclear, you certainly can take a motion. I mean, normally we don't do that in a work session, but it's not illegal. You can make the motion and, and, and make that, have that clarification made on the record.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody have any other questions for Joe? Look like it. Thank you. The way I see it, there's two ways we can do it. We can, I'll take a motion if somebody wants to take a crack at it, or we can ask our staff. Oh, Mr. Anglin, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions. And I think really for us as a Commission, I can't speak on behalf of everybody here, but it, I would just say over the last year or so, there's been just confusion with, so when we meet as a Commission, you know, we're, we're talking about day-to-day operations, we're, we're talking about all the different things that we are responsible for and what BPU staff does. We, we oftentimes, can I hold this up? So we, we take a look at our organizational chart, how we set within the city. We understand that. But when we get together and we make strategic initiatives, we outline what we want to do from a, from a staffing perspective, because we want to make sure that all the positions are filled, we want to make sure that we're thinking about succession planning and, you know, who do we have in the right positions and making strategic hires. What was really difficult this year was just the discussions about consolidation and, and trying to create efficiencies from an overall citywide perspective. So that, that created just hesitancy on our part in terms of how we view our day-to-day operations and how we want to move forward as an organization and most effectively serve our customers. So as it relates to employing staff and making recommendations, you know, that, that was a difficult year, I think, for us looking back, just because there is, there is instability or there was just uncertainty, I should say. So I think as a Commission, that's one of the biggest things. And then we meet as a Personnel Committee, and so we, we reference this, we redline it, we think about it, we talk about specific positions and, and how we can move forward. So I think that's where the, the challenge is for us as a Commission, is, is from a personnel standpoint and employing staff. And so my question is, and what we've started to do as a Personnel Committee, is we've, we've met with, with City Administrator and with Chris, we're trying to bring them into our meetings now just to try to increase communication between the two. But as far as ultimately the City Council making decisions on staffing and, and our strategic initiatives, is there a way that we can deliver that information to you? Like, how do you process that information now to make those decisions? And so I'm just asking that question in general, because I think that would help how we look at this and what our opinion is, I guess, of paragraph four here. And as a Commissioner, what value do we bring to this entire process here? You know, what, what should we concentrate our efforts on? And so I think that would be a great thing to hear from the Council, is how do you make decisions based on our recommendations? How do you receive those recommendations?
I can, I can answer from my perspective at least. I don't, I don't remember if we've had any personnel recommendations from the Commission that we've just said no. The only time we have delayed one was during this session here while we're talking about, let's figure all this stuff out before we hire a new Public Utilities Director. Other than that, if, if there's a recommendation that comes from the Commission that makes sense, I don't, I don't really see a whole lot of pushback from anyone on this Council. But, Johnson?
Yeah, to answer that, we have, as a practice, if the Public Utilities Commission has a recommendation for an employee or a change or anything, as a matter of practice, it has gone straight to the consent calendar. We haven't, we, we trust you guys to be doing the right thing. If things start getting out of hand or something seems like it's going haywire in that department, we may start pulling it off of consent and discussing it as a Council, but we've never even had a discussion. We, we just trust that you guys are doing a good job, and it's been on the consent calendar as a matter of practice. That's not written in the Charter or Employee Policy Manual or anything, but that's what we've done for the last couple of years.
Sure. Well, I think that's good to hear. And it, I guess for us, just as we're talking about whether it's an interim public, you know, Director or Public Utilities Director, or if we want to hold off and, and have a full-time or a permanent Director, what, you know, when do we have that conversation? When do we get you all that information to explain why we're feeling the way that we feel?
Can I say that, Mike?
Go ahead.
As far as I know, the majority of the Public Utility Commission voted to hire a Public Utilities Director. That was brought to the city. That one did not end up on the consent calendar. That was put on Personnel and Finance, maybe because of me, I don't know, maybe Nick, I don't know why. But we needed to have a discussion because the, the process for hiring the past one wasn't perfect. I don't know if there is a perfect process. And the length of time that individual stayed in the city, coupled with the, the resignation letter he submitted, raised a lot of questions and some things that need to be figured out before we move forward to set somebody up to fail. What potentially set the next Director up to fail if there aren't some questions answered. So as far as I'm concerned, or as far as how I read all of this, you guys have requested that you want to replace a full-time Public Utilities Director. We are in the process of doing that right now. We're not not doing it. That, that's why we're here. This is all part of that process.
Right. I know, one second, Mr. Anglin, Mr. Jaeger had comments too?
If he has a follow-up, but we can close that conversation.
Go ahead, Mr. Anglin.
Yeah, so the, another thing, just as we're, we're talking, so as we look at our org chart, there are, for example, when we have our personnel meetings, we identify what positions haven't been filled yet, you know, and we, and we talk about, is the job description. And again, having meetings directly with Nick and Chris, I think have helped out a lot in, in terms of just justifying the need, explaining what we're looking for, what we've budgeted. And so again, I think just, just asking that question tonight, if, and I'm just offering that, if it ever seems like it would be beneficial for one of us to be at one of the meetings with you on the PNF Commissioner Committee, I would welcome that, you know? And whatever we can do to just clearly communicate what our objectives are, and especially from a personnel standpoint and employment, we would welcome that. And, and, you know, we're, again, we're identifying the need, and we're not, in addition to just thinking about the positions themselves, we can explain why we're thinking that way, and then also just what we have budgeted for that. So I'm just offering that we would be more than happy to attend any kind of a meeting, provide you additional information.
I think that would be great, and I think that's something that whoever the PNF Chair is at the time should communicate with whoever is on Personnel at the BPU Committee as well. We always have a few days to make that request in between when we see the agenda and we have our meeting. So I think that's workable. Mr. Jaeger?
Yeah, quickly, thank you very much. Thanks everyone for being here. I was a part of the Park Board, and I was also at the, simultaneously on the Charter Commission when this, a lot of this language was rewritten. The Park Board conversation was a, a, a large impetus to how this all got started. The Park Board, in their understanding, basically worked fully autonomously with employees at the time. Joe, Mr. Langley hit it right on the head. That presents a, a certain measurable amount of risk to the city. I think anybody in this, in this room can understand how if we have an entity that is technically hiring Brainerd employees, running them themselves, passing out their own handbook, managing their time, managing their PTO, whatever, that presents a, a real problem for the continuity of the city. So that was a large driver in why a lot of people felt that this should be written. I happen to agree with that. I can also say that as a, when we made the change at the Park Board to go to a, a Public Works Director, a lot of the issues that we were having with staff instantly kind of worked themselves out. At that time, it was Mr. Sandy. He had, the, the staff had somebody to answer to. Mr. Sandy came to the Commission, came to us to, to make recommendations on what staff they felt like they needed, if they were higher level staff. And then we brought that along down, along down the line. I think that's exactly how it should work. In my opinion, the long-term healthiness, healthiness of our Commissions and our Council, not getting bogged down in what employee means or what this word means or that means is quite simple. We want an, I want an open communication between our Commissions. Come before us, tell us what you have for obstacles, tell us what you need for staff and why, tell us how much, you know, what that, what, what is needed there to do your daily duties, and then let's all have a conversation of, of should we or should we not? That's how I would like to see it work. I have no appetite whatsoever to take on the task of hiring BPU employees and determining what your org chart is. I have no appetite for that, me personally. I do want somebody who's out there every single day with obstacles, hurdles, successes and failures to come before me and say, this is why. Help me solve problems, help me succeed out there, help me grow, and then I can make a decision on that. There's one other little tidbit to this that I think is a factor. When you have When you have commissions acting 100% autonomously out there, say, for instance, with a director, similar to what we have with the Park Board for, we only see these people maybe once a month. So, we're placing an enormous amount of, in my opinion, blind trust in some of these commissions, that they are making decisions on their own with staffing that is in the best interest of the entire city as a whole. I don't like that concept, and that was one of the big reasons why I was a proponent of bringing the people, the employees, back to the city council, so it could be in an open communication. So, that's kind of where I'm at with this. I feel if this is all working right, commissions, you know, commissions, authorities, come before us, tell us what your needs are, talk, let's talk through that, and then we can make a decision either prior to budget time, or whenever, budget time obviously is a critical fulcrum point for us in every year, but I'd just like to see the open communication, I think all this will work itself out. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Mr. Chesak, did you have something?
Yeah, just kind of a clarification, I know Gabe said a lot of times the hires are on consent. What I think we find, our resignations are on consent, I just looked up an April meeting, and we do have the hires' approval on our PNF agenda. I think what maybe Gabe is saying is they're very non-controversial, is I think what we find, but the same as consent, but we do have a motion in a second for each employee, that's what I'm looking at here, anyway, so. Not that it's a big deal, but I just wanted to let the commission know that generally speaking, we don't just hire or approve the hires on consent. Not to, not to sit here and challenge what you said, Gabe, but that is generally out, we, non-controversial, so.
Yeah, I may have misspoke there, Jeff, but we've put, maybe not the hiring individuals, we put a lot of recommendations that we get from the commission, in the employment sense, on consent, whether it's at a position description, or something, we've had a lot on the consent calendar, maybe not everything, but we trust that commission is doing a good job.
Thank you, that's a good way to put it, I like that.
All right. Is that all, Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, thank you.
I do have comments from the mayor, and then Dolly will go to you.
Sure, yeah, so I just want to follow up on what Kevin said, because I participated in that process, as well as the liaison to the Park Board. Long process getting to that decision, but ultimately the correct decision, right? The Park Board decided they no longer wanted a director, they wanted a public works director, so that the city could operate with some pieces that could move back and forth. Is it perfect? No. Now, watching the pieces afterwards, there still is some confusion from time to time in terms of, what does that mean? You know, who hires the park and rec specialists, that sort of thing. But it ultimately has worked out in that the Park Board has the decision to make in terms of how things then operate. You know, some of the pieces get swung around, and our, you know, decisions are made from, from the people that are employed to run it for us, but once those decisions are made, there's still that continuity in terms of what we want our Park Board to be. Does that shift if somebody new comes in? Absolutely. Does that sometimes end up in that instance where we have a fresh set of eyes on everything, and we're completely kind of restarting? Absolutely. But in terms of from the city side of things, it's easy for us to say, this is what you're in charge of, take care of this stuff, and then when stuff comes up, it's on the liaisons and whatnot, to say, wait a minute, let that come back to the city, deal with those things from that standpoint, focus in on this. And it, it does work pretty well. Park Board, much smaller, I will say that, much smaller, but if we put the pieces in place correctly, it should operate on a top-down type scenario.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dolly?
Yep, and so, I'm just trying to formulate my thought process here, because I do remember asking when we, when the charter was changed, I was one of those that wasn't happy with, still thought it was vague, and I thought that we needed to footnote it as to what the intent was at the time this charter was being changed. And I think ultimately, it, we might have to tweak the phrasing a little bit, because I think the intent was for the city council to provide final approval on all employment. And, and I think that's why there's confusion, right? Because as Mr. Johnson was saying, that, you know, ultimately, these are usually on the consent agenda, you know, you're giving final approval. I think the commission really just wanted to be involved when it came to that department head, being a part of, you know, that hiring process, because it was a little bit more involved than, than the positions that are on the org chart. The purpose of our personnel committee isn't to establish wages and what have you, but it's to establish, to make sure the job descriptions are clear, that the job positions are really what are needed. I think it's been tweaked a number of times, more so just even recently, is to not backfill a position because it isn't needed, so as we move forward, but I think on a micro scale, that's what we're dealing with, to bring it to you on the macro level. And I think that that's why the intent there on number four was still vague when it was written, and clearly five years later, we're still talking about it. So, and I am a firm believer that the city administrator and should be involved, the city administrator should be able to oversee all department heads, period. Ultimately, they are making, making sure that all departments are functioning and operating at a legal level, right? As the attorney was talking about, as far as the wages and, and just the policies. I mean, we even had some miscommunication more so recently with our policies, that we were able to chat with Chris about, and she clarified, and our decisions to do certain things had changed because of that. So, I believe in the consistency amongst all the, in the employees and the policies, but I still think that that number four language does need to be tweaked just a little bit more with exactly what people are saying at this point. It really ultimately comes back to city councils making the final decision on all employment, all recommendations of employment, and/or those that are, you know, putting in their resignation, and that's all I'd have.
Thank you. Johnson?
And I have a slightly different interpretation, I think, of number four here. I think it says, "The city council shall employ all necessary help for performance duties and approve all terms and conditions of employment." I think, as Joe brought up, if it still said, "The commission shall employ all necessary help for the commission to properly perform its duties and approve all terms and conditions of employment," I don't think anybody would say they're confused on what that means. They just wouldn't, because it would say that the commission shall employ and approve all terms and conditions. This one just says the city council, instead of the commission. It's not confusing to me, but that goes back to not, we're not just, as a city council, we're not just approving hires and fires. We're, there are city employees that are managed by the city's organizational chart that has the city council, city administrator, all department heads, including the public utility department under the city administrator. So, it's management, it's oversight, it's disciplinary, it's all coming from the city administrator's office, it's not just approval of hirings and firings. That's just how I see number four.
Thank you. I see the one small part of that sentence, the one part of that sentence that you could maybe pull the ambiguity out, might be that part where it says, "All necessary help for the commission to properly perform its duties." That is, that is a vague statement, that part might be the confusing part. But in the beginning of that, "The city council shall employ and approve all terms and conditions of employment" is pretty clear. So, by adding in, "All necessary help for the commission to properly perform its duties", I think was, in my opinion, an intent to give reason why we're employing these people, but it still says that they are city employees, employed and hired by the council. Mr. Chesak?
To your point, I mean, if we want to change language, we have to have a charter change. If we want to have an interpretation, I would just, right now, suggest that if, I think if we have a consensus here, that I'm, I'm seeing it the same way Gabe is, the same way you are. It's our interpretation, it's our job to interpret this under, you know, what Joe said, we have authority to do that. So, if we came back with, say, at our August 4th meeting, or perhaps our second meeting in August with an interpretation, based on what we're talking about tonight, I'd be prepared to just ask staff to come back with that, is what, from what they're hearing from us tonight, unless you needed it in the form of a motion, to have them come back.
I don't necessarily need that in the form of a motion, but that's kind of the way I saw this coming out, whatever way the conversation went, so.
I mean, I guess what I'm getting at, it gives clarity, and if there's any ambiguity, it just says, here's the council's interpretation, it wouldn't have to change the charter, because that requires a Charter Commission meeting, and then their recommendation, if I'm not mistaken, and then, of course, unanimous of the council.
Long process.
Right, but, yeah, unanimous, yeah, so, so I guess if we want to get this off a dead center, and I don't know if anybody else has any other objections to what other language is ambiguous or whatever, but.
Mr. Higgins had his hand up, and then Mr. Jaeger.
Um, I, I've learned a lot, I understand by listening to you guys and listening to what happened in the past, I would love it if Jeff would make a motion, we just get this done right now.
I just have a quick question, just as a part of process, maybe somebody can educate me. How does an interpretation get passed on to future generations?
Well, we could write it down, that's why my idea would be to have staff come back to the next meeting, have us vote on an interpretation that is...
Is it attached to the charter, then, or, no?
No, the last...
So, somebody has to dig it out to find it?
It'd be a resolution.
So, the last time we interpreted the charter was after the last round of charter changes, we changed the green space and arboretum funding to go to an organization located in Brainerd, and it came back to the city council, and a majority of the city council determined that Northland Arboretum on Conservation Drive in Baxter is located in Brainerd. So, that is currently the interpretation of what inside Brainerd means in the city of Brainerd.
Yeah, understood, I was just, I was hoping to get some finality to this, that could be passed on for more than a couple of years, so.
You said that was a resolution? Gabe, was that a resolution?
I don't remember it was a resolution, I remember that Conservation Drive is currently in Brainerd.
Can I ask what our administrator thinks of this discussion so far, and if he has anything, he'd like to...
He was just chiming in.
Just a couple of comments, I think clarity of expectations is critical. There's a lot of people in this room, and they have different opinions, probably across the spectrum, and I respect all those opinions. I also think that a clear definitive direction from the staff, whether people agree or disagree, in my opinion, is irrelevant, as long as we have clear expectation of what the rules of engagement are going forward, staff can be successful. So, I just appreciate the dialogue, I'm not emotionally invested in a decision one way or the other, but staff will absolutely carry out the direction that the council wants.
Well, I wasn't planning on asking for a motion, but if somebody wants to make a motion for a resolution to come back and clarify and interpret the charter that we've been speaking about tonight, we could just do that, be done with it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak?
I would move that we direct staff to come back, hopefully at the August 4th meeting, or perhaps whatever works best for them, to come back with a resolution, clarifying what they're hearing tonight, based on what they're hearing tonight, the interpretation of, what is it, item four of the section five, the one that Mr. Higgins discussed there, and then Dolly, the one that we're mainly talking about, shall employ the necessary help, I think that's the, I mean, I agree with what I've heard from Gabe and Mike, and I understand there could be some confusion, so just to have staff come back, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Chesak, second by Johnson. Johnson?
I support the motion, absolutely. Do you want to have a second motion, or address the gravity-fed lines? Should we bring back a possible charter amendment for that as well?
That would be, that would be a charter amendment discussion, if you guys want to go into that discussion next, I think that's separate.
Okay.
But I think it's something that we, as a city, need to discuss going forward. It doesn't necessarily have to be part of this discussion, but I know Mr. Higgins brought up some pretty serious things about that, that we shall think about, so.
Shall.
Shall, think about. Anyone else?
On what Gabe talked about there, if I could, I think we're talking specifically about roles and responsibilities, I think we're deviating from our special agenda, or meeting agenda, if we want to do that, we'd have to be very careful, but I think if we have that come back at our future meeting soon, that'd be great.
Okay.
Speaking back to what he said.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's all go to a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign, a motion passes, and that will conclude that item for tonight. Looks like we do have three B.
Mr. Chair?
Kevin's.
An unrelated but related comment, if I may?
Okay.
I heard Mr. Anglin mention twice, "Our" org chart. I heard Mr. Jaeger mention the public utilities, your org chart. Is there two different org charts?
Are you just talking about your section of the org chart?
Oh, okay. My radar went up, because I think a lot of times people hear what you say, and it sounded like you were drawing a line in the sand, that there's two different companies here. And I think that's part of how we got in this position, is sometimes people hear what you say, so please be careful, it's not two different companies, it's the city of Brainerd, and it's not "our" anything, it's all of "our" everything. So, when you say stuff like that, you may not be thinking, but I heard it, and I heard you say it, oh, the PUC org, like, they're a separate company, and that's kind of how we, we got here, and it hurts people's feelings, and they don't know, they don't know, what did you mean by that? Who do I work for? It can create confusion, so. I just wanted to mention that, that it's, if we can all start thinking like the city of Brainerd, this will be easier. There's no us versus them, there's just us.
I heard, I heard "our," I heard "our," thank you.
I do have one question, as since you brought that up, when I do look at the complete overall structure of the org chart, I do see boards and commissions being above the city administrator, which, to me, it doesn't make sense. I, I thought that, I mean, I know that we're giving directions to our department head when we do get one, but right now, the three are filling in, that's great, but I, if I look at the city's org chart, it would tell me that all of the department head, department heads report to the city administrator, but the city administrator is being overseen by boards and commissions, and that, all of that is being overseen by city council. So, I think there's some confusion where those lines are being met, and I think you need to address that at some point.
Bringing that line on the far left down below.
Above city administrator.
Yep, bringing it down to below, city administrator is what you're suggesting?
Correct.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point.
I just, I just, look at that mayor over there by himself, just out in there, no man's land.
He used to have a police department.
I know, I did, and you took it away from me.
He used to have night watchmen, too, though, so.
Night watchmen, we've got to get that out of the chart.
But I think, I think Dolly brings up a good point, if we want to bring that up at a next council meeting as an agenda item, that's worth a discussion, for sure. Thank you, Dolly. Anyone else? Comments on that, closing comments? Otherwise, we're moving on to item 3B, and that's accessing packet training. We're doing that tonight. Prefer the commission, too, or do they not have to stay for that part?
They do not have to, it'll only be a couple of minutes, but you can clear the room if you want.
Are they on a different packet distribution system?
I hope not, okay. You should stay around, this is good information, then.
Okay, go ahead.
Couple of quick minutes.
Don't know what you're going to miss.
This whole topic came up because of packet size, and people doing things differently, your computers are getting old, which, we have new ones, they'll be replaced fairly soon, battery life, all these things, we're addressing all of these in one fall swoop. The idea behind Civic Clerk software here was to use the board portal, we've talked about it quite a bit, in a meeting last Wednesday, I think it was, we talked about it, it's probably more difficult to use than, than any benefit, in particular, in the case of in the meeting. It works great for making the packet, from the staff's perspective, but for you guys, or people sitting in a meeting scrolling through this, if you pick, I don't know if anybody's looked at the board portal before or not, but I'm just going to show you real quick, if you go into a meeting, this is what it looks like, sorry, Jeff, it's, it's not that exciting, I'll just leave it at that. Everything is individualized, if you want to go into an item, you've got to click on something, you have to go individually open each PDF as you're going.
Cancel contract.
You've got to hit the next item.
Done, fired.
The benefit of board portal is if you came in here, you could enter a bunch of notes, and have them in front of you. and have them in front of you when you're at the meeting. But on a 13-inch screen where you're normally just bookmarking and scrolling through, having to click on every individual thing, having to scroll down to the next item every single time, this is not a good way of doing things for you guys during the meeting. So we tried something similar, the draw board back on those surfaces two versions ago, for those that remember it. Didn't get used. It wasn't great. So we're going to try to squash the idea of using board portal in meetings itself and just move towards a standard email that is auto-generated every time a packet is published. I don't, everyone should be getting these. If they're not, we got to get you subscribed to the meet, to the alerts themselves. We're going to format this a little different, so it's a link straight to downloading the packet. We'll put the instructions on how to do it at the bottom of every single email. All of the different meetings will come out the same way. There won't be special emails from people that have modified versions of the packets anymore. Jeff, of course, you're the exception to that. You'll still get whatever Tony currently sends you.
Yeah, just like you're describing.
We'll continue the same way. But everybody else, for all the meetings, not just City Council, but Planning and Park and all those things will all be standardized.
Sean, I think Gabe has a question for you.
Oh, go ahead.
So what I'm hearing is we're still going to receive one email with an attachment to a PDF that we click on. It'll just be slightly different formatting.
Almost. There won't be an attachment to the email.
Well, there'll be a link to click.
It'll be a link to go get it.
Or then download it on the, so it's two clicks instead of one?
No, it's probably more than two clicks. But.
But the PDFs are getting too big.
The PDFs are getting too big. That's the biggest thing at this point.
I'll take the paper copy.
Single-sided or double?
They don't make a font big enough for you, Stunek.
Forty-five point.
So, that's where we're going with this. We're going to schedule a meeting with every single person who makes a packet, make sure they're all doing it the exact same way, trying to standardize, make everything consistent. But yes, you'll get a link to go download it, probably from the website, and we need people to actually download it to your computer, not just click on it. We have these little issues all the time where the Wi-Fi is not working fast enough, and people are waiting to load their packets and stuff. So we're going to try to get, first of all, new computers, so they work a little faster, but then also make sure everybody's doing it the same way, getting it downloaded before you get here, if possible, so we don't have these little glitches right before meetings and stuff. So that's where we're going. I think I hit everything I had written down. Are there any questions about where we're headed here?
Thank you. Once it's, sorry, once it's downloaded, the tabs still work, the shortcuts still work?
Yes.
Bookmarks?
Bookmarks, yes.
Yeah.
Dolly Madden?
Just real quick.
I actually have a question as the end user of some of these things. And I know I've brought this up, I don't remember why, I actually chatted with James. To find the city of Brainerd on the website, or not on the website, just to find the city of Brainerd is impossible. I am three pages in, and I can't find the city of Brainerd.
SEO is garbage. They went to.
Seal contracts.
Header, and nothing is registering anywhere. It's absolutely terrible. Just a little bit of work would get us back on top.
To find the agendas as an end user is difficult. So I'm just, wanted to point that out. It's great, but if an average citizen was going to look it up like myself, I can't find it.
Unfortunately, the first step, the first solution to that problem is to not use Google, which most people aren't going to use because that's what the issue is. It was fixed for a while, a couple of months ago. It appears to be broken again. Civic Plus seems not be able to keep that at the top of our website. I'll bring it up again, but.
Jeff, and then Danny's got something too?
So Sean, if there is a packet too large, it can just be split in my case, right, or something?
Yeah, our send-receive is 50 meg right now, so it's over that. Tony would have to send yours in two pieces, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Danny?
The BPU website does have a link to all the city of Brainerd's website. If you click on bpu.org, scroll all the way to the bottom, there's a link to the city of Brainerd's website for anyone that has trouble finding it.
Thank you.
So that's about the update. Like I said, new laptops in, probably in August. And we'll just have everybody come in individually, bring in your old, set up the new, and be on your way. So those aren't too far out, so I guess that's all I got.
Thanks, Sean. Mayor Bedell?
I just have one comment. We have a council member, his name is Gabe Johnson, his.
Second.
Company is to do SEO, literally does this for a living. I would love for us to make our council member, who is really good at this, fix the website so that it operates correctly.
Chair of Personnel and Finance and IT?
Yep.
Not saying, not saying that our IT program.
I can meet with Sean and take a look on the backend, see what we can.
You have said outside of these chambers that you can fix it, and so now I demand that you fix it.
It cannot be hard.
You need a motion for that, or is that okay?
I'll meet with Sean. We'll talk about it.
Thank you. I think that's it for tonight, unless you have anything more, Sean?
I do not.
He should paint the fence on College Drive.
And I don't think we need a motion to adjourn, so let's just adjourn.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.